Mayor Hess, we are ready to go.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Raybain. I will call the Missoula City Council meeting for October 16th to order. Apologies for the delay and I appreciate everyone's patience. If you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. Into your republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll note that all members are present with the exception of Mr. Kontos and Ms. Jones. And Ms. Jones will be joining us a little bit late tonight. We have, we do not have minutes tonight. So we'll move into public comment on non-agenda items. So this is your opportunity to comment on something that is not on our agenda to discuss tonight. We ask that you keep your comments germane to an issue that is potentially before the city and that you keep your comments respectful and that you limit yourself to three minutes. And if you'd please say your first name and spell your last name for our transcriptionist. And come on up. Mr. Tenenbaum, Representative, or Senator, apologies.
Mayor Hess, if it's okay, could we do dual public comment together? Okay. Just wanted to introduce myself. I think I know everyone here. My name is Danny Tenenbaum, former state rep here locally, but I'm here with.
Senator Ellie Boldman.
B O L D M A N, like a bold man, but a bold woman.
And we're just here because we are on the statewide housing task force and it's meeting again in 2023. And our first meeting of this second phase is tomorrow. And what we would like is to hear from all of you, your ideas, your input. That's something that we really do value and we hope going forward that we can work in concert with the city and other county local governments in order to really produce some good results for the housing task force.
Yes, and as Danny, Representative Tenenbaum, said, I know that all of us here, in a very bipartisan way, oh wait, you're not partisan. However, agree that the housing crisis is real. It's urban, it's rural, it's tribal. I've had the great pleasure to be one of the only two people in the minority party on the bipartisan task force. We did chose tonight to come and visit with you because later in the agenda you will hear the six bills from the 23 legislative session that were a product of last session's housing task force. We met with city attorney and staff today who had the great enormity of codifying six bills. It's a lot of land needs changed. The crisis is urban, urgent from our perspective and it's the number one thing we hear about at the state level from our shared constituents. I did want to share that we're in great support of the enormous work that your city staff did in trying to codify the six statutes. There is an amendment that we have that we hope that you'll support that represents a specific bill that I happen to co-sponsor. It was Senate Bill 407. I wanted to share that there's not very much in the Montana Legislature that has bipartisan support. In fact, I call those times a unicorn. But Senate Bill 407 did pass 49 to 1 in the Senate and 100 to 0 in the House. And so although your staff today very respectfully said that they didn't codify parts of those, not because they disagreed with them, but because it was a little bit more, not in their timeline. Our timeline at the state level, as you know, is fairly urgent. I just wanted to say also, it isn't just market rate housing that we need. And I know that so many of you are attuned to that. We need rental houses, we need crisis beds, we need workforce housing, we need affordable housing, we need heads on beds, and we need more doors. And I think that, I know that the work that we can do together and that you're going to hear tonight accomplishes that. So we have more work to do. We'll head back to Helena tomorrow and you all have my cell phones and his too. So thank you so much.
And I would just add for everyone here, there's public comment tomorrow at the meeting. The meeting starts at 2:30 and it's available on Zoom to tune in. You don't have to drive all the way over to Helena and we welcome public comment. We actually came up with some ideas specifically because some people just decided to tune in and share their thoughts. So thank you very much.
Thank you both. Anyone else tonight for general public comment? Mr. Everingham?
David, David Everingham, E V E R I N G H A M. I want to thank everybody for serving on board and legislature. It's a tough job, I couldn't do it. Appreciate all your efforts and your sacrifices on Monday nights. Riverfront property, I bought an open hole kayak at Bob Ward's two weeks ago. I put into the Clark Fork River at Hagan Street and paddle upstream to the University Irrigation weir. There are bull trout endangered species, petro trout, ducks, geese, minks, beavers, otters, muskrats, to name a few of the animals and fish and insects that make the Clark Fork in Missoula their home. There's over 40 tents along the way occupied by homeless people. Paddling and walking up in front of the Edgewater Restaurant, Doubletree Motel and Missoula Chamber of Commerce, I saw straight across the river over 10 tents, garbage, desert camps and people homeless. My heart bleeds for these people. One man was waist deep in the water, half naked, screaming at me and yelling. Another man was stooped over looking at the rocks. Then one defecated in front of the people having lunch on the Edgewater deck. I'm appalled that the city, county and state have not cleaned up the rivers. $400 room, $200 lunch to watch the circus across the river. It is unconscionable and embarrassing that this behavior is tolerated by our local governments. Your inability to manage our homeless in the city and move the people to Johnson Street Shelter baffles me. There is a huge lot to put 100 tents on the MRA property that was bought seven years ago for redevelopment. Do your job and get the filth and litter off our rivers and keep the tents, cities off the rivers for good. The rivers are our lifeline. Bonner Park would be a good place, so would Pineview Park, Silver Park, anything but the river. There's a lot of junk down there, you'd be surprised. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else tonight?
Yeah, my name is Delon Bryant, B R Y A N T. I am homeless and I'm an advocate. I understand where that gentleman is coming from. But in order for anything to happen, guys, all you guys on the stand look nice. Got nice houses, nice cars. There's hardly any place for us to live. So if we can come to a minor agreement and come up with a plan, not a pause, then the homeless situation could be semi taken care of. I know for a fact that Washington DC sends over billions of dollars to different states to help with the homeless epidemic. But the problem is the money is put on hold. I don't have the money to pay 2% to 3% for moving into an apartment. So I chose to move into a hotel. That's better than the latter, which is staying on the streets in front of buildings. Limiting people from where they can stay is not right. You can't solve a cut with just a Band-Aid. If anybody in the city or the state of Montana cares, the best person to talk to is the individuals that are living it, not the individuals that are not living it. I've been a homeless advocate since 2012. Started in Washington State, talked to the mayor and the governor of Washington State trying to get things going. I had a box of clothes sent to Salvation Army when I was living out here in 2018 to put in their shelter to give to homeless people. I'm not a person that just woke up and decided to be a homeless advocate. I see how we are treated. We're kind of looked at as peasants, some of us, because of the actions that most of us do. We're not peasants, we actually need help. Housing help, financial help, some kind of rehabilitation help to try to get into the community so the community don't look at us in a negative way. We're not doing malice things to show that we are bad people. Most of the people that do malice things, they really seek help, but nobody's helping them. If people take time out and actually find out what's wrong, then the solution can be solved. I don't ask for anything for me, but the individuals that don't have a voice, they have one now. I don't mind helping, but I need, you guys have nice meetings. Think about this, if it was you on this stand right now and you're dressed like this, how would you feel? And if this was you and this is all you had in your pocket, how would you feel? I mean, this ain't much, but it's a lot. And I don't make that much, but I don't mind giving. We need help, we really do. Not too many of us know the resources that I know. But what I know, I come and I share and I don't mind. But we need help. The city of Missoula, when I came here first time, they had a lot of tourism. Now the tourism has failed because of the homeless epidemic.
Mr. Bryant, you're a little over our three minute limit, so I ask you wrap it up. But thank you for coming down tonight. Anyone else tonight for general public comment? Ms. Wolf.
Hi, I'm Linda Wolf, W O L F E. And I'm just here tonight to talk to you guys about a town hall meeting that's coming up at C S Porter Middle School on October 24th. It's put on by Healthy Missoula Youth, or the Missoula City County Health Coalition that's working on the awareness of cannabis use in our youth. I just wanted to share with you guys, I know you guys mostly, most of you guys know that my husband and I have gone through with our son cannabis-induced psychosis. And it was really devastating and awful to a point where, I mean, I know other parents that have gone through it and it is just terrible, it really is. But the latest research just came out that I just wanted to read real quick. Latest cannabis research, the latest research reported at Cape Cod Symposium on addictive disorders in Massachusetts, September 7th through the 10th, 2023. Paints a chilling picture of the dangers of high-level THC. Whether we want to acknowledge it or not, our brains cannot handle the high levels. The word that we started to use when it was industrialized is psychosis. This is the trajectory. In the 60s, weed was 4%, no withdrawals. In the last three to four years, it exploded. It is no longer safe, the research says. Our minds cannot consume that amount of THC in edibles or flour without major medical concerns. Psychosis is what people are getting. People are pushing the envelope, especially our young people whose brains are not even fully developed yet. Research says that weed worsens depression, anxiety, bipolar, et cetera. When people say it helps their depression, they are being deceived for the most part. When people are high, they do not notice it's getting worse because of the high. After the high, it's almost always worse. And that's what people don't, I mean, it's a thing that they're learning now. Our brains cannot handle these levels of THC, but the industry equals money. We should all be very concerned about what this new research is saying. This is something that my family and I have seen firsthand and it is true. Please cap the amount of cannabis shops in Missoula. It's a start and it's imperative to our kids that we do something, you know, that we do something about this super harmful, high THC modern weed. Lab weed is what it is. It's not even the weed that we remember, it's not. Just wanted to let you guys know the latest that I heard and I read and I know it to be true because I lived it.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Appreciate your comments. Mr. Moore?
My name is Bob Moore, M O O R E. Had a little interest in the Marshall Mountain, went to a couple of meetings. Now see here headline published by Missoula Current. Marshall Mountain cost estimates clearer as purchase decision limits. I want to mention that I've got no faith whatsoever in the ability of y'all's or the county department or whoever's putting these numbers together because of whatever experience in the past. Incan said the legal fees were going to cost $400,000, it cost $14 million. $400,000 ended up being $14 million. Who in the city council or the staff is making such numbers? Someone told me that the sleepy inn, I can't even remember who it was, was going to be sold for a lot of money, big profit. I've passed by there many, many times in the last month or two. Doesn't seem to me to be selling, so I guess no one knew then. So I basically put no faith in the estimates for Marshall. And I think the purchase price was going to be around $4 million. The yearly operating, I think I read around $400,000, which is a sad, sad joke, no truth to that whatsoever. And then the mayor said, citing taxpayer concern, city pulls to fire levy. So we get to have a mountain, go ski on it and climb on it and walk on trails and Lord only knows what you're going to do. But who on the city council thinks we should pull the fire levy because of property tax concern? I think it's about the most criminal thing you can do. I read where they had, I've forgotten how many now. Several years of no increase in the fire department. Police department has doubled, I was told. So how are we doing it? You really want to spend those monies and pursue, pursue, let's say it's going to be a skiing place or trail place or bike place. But is that better or worth more than the fireplace?
You're coming up on three and a half minutes, Mr. Moore.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think you should look, the whole city council and all the employees should start giving honest appraisals of what they think things cost.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else tonight? And I'll note for the record that Ms. Jones joined us several minutes ago. Mr. Oswald?
Jeffrey Oswald, I live over on Mount Avenue. I worked for 20 years taking care of developmentally disabled adults. And some of them had significant behavioral difficulties. And we have programs in place and training that we go through on a yearly basis to try and make a system where they could function well and succeed in a consistent manner where the behaviors that were not considered to be normal were in a context that they could still come out of it feeling like they're moving forward in life. And one of the things that we learned in training every year, and the same training every year, conflict resolution and crisis management sort of stuff, was that when you had a program for somebody that had a developmental problem in fitting in, you tried to find a way for everybody to win. Because when people don't see any way that they can win, their behavior is not as good as if they can see a way that they can succeed in the situation they find themselves in. It's a different emphasis in the way of coming up with a response to malfunction. And it's, instead of having a punitive response, it's a response that allows education and modification. But my point is that punitive responses are not usually functional and that's why we were trained to try to find a different way of going about it. And I think that the city's government could learn from that, my system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Anyone else tonight for general public comment? Mr. Alt?
Hi, good evening. I'm Alan Alt, I'm running for city council ward four. And we've all heard about our property taxes, Mr. and Mrs. Missoula, or Mr. Missoula, how much we're paying. But you know, here's something that you don't hear from this body. And I'd like to start bringing little things like this to people's attentions. And I dare the newspapers, I dare the media to go against me or misquote me on this. If you look at the Quest Building that sits on 14th Street and Russell Avenue, the big four and a half acres that we're all paying taxes now, GeoCode 0422002946518000, look it up. The value of that building that sits there on four and a half acres is zero. And I want to formally offer a $1 bid to buy that property if it's valued at zero. And you know what it pays in city taxes? Zero. Now, people of Missoula, wake up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alt. Anyone else tonight? All right, seeing none. Mr. Spitzmacher, come on up.
You do have quite a dilemma coming ahead with the cold temperatures dropping. How well is the Johnson Center doing for capacity? And where are these people going to go when the temperature starts to go brr? The Pavarello is minimally filled. Or the putrid swamp in regards to the employees, certain employees that I've dealt with. The word is deceitful. And I think those that advocate the deceit of some of these employees that advocate drug addiction in the building, I'm suspecting 20 minutes in the bathroom at least, advocated. And I get brutalized for the fact I call them on the carpet from this particular staff member. And you know what I called her in the emails? It's not very delicious, but if she was the B word, the place would be running more appropriate. They got new staff members that are more regarding, friendlier, that are not been terrorized possibly by some of those wonderful people that are respected by the other staff members, some of them that were put to the broad acts. Mr. Hess, you're on the board of directors of the Pavarello. I want to know where the funding comes from for that building or the operation? And who's footing the bill? And Chair Hess, Harry S. Truman would say, where does the buck stop? And it stopped at his desk. When I visit the Truman Library, I actually seen it on his desk. And I pulled up there at the library in a Republican truck, go figure. Now my question is, one of the council members said, I mean, the city should not be involved in the homeless situation and so forth. But she didn't go and tell Public Safety not to call or not to visit the problems that are created of that facility of the Pavarello. Is it true that the Public Safety was called there X number of times over 10 in one day? That's what I heard, is that hearsay? My question is, I asked you, what do you people actually understand of the big picture of the issues that are going to coming up? And why is it advantageous to say we're going to get rid of the Johnson Street facility until you've got another facility to pick up the slack of the problems that's going to get worse as it does in other cities? And there's a few council members that are running, that set a real lot at the gathering at the library and fourth floor, the last time it was to the council, Ward Four and Ward Six. May they be swapped out and that'll be the handwriting to the next election. Thank you.
And that's Carl Spitzmacher for the record. Anyone else tonight, last chance. Mr. Shea?
It's Shea. I'm Clayton Shea, S H A Y A. You're on the board of directors for the Pavarello. That never came up in our discussion. That was, today's the, what, middle of the month? It's been over a month since I asked you those 20 questions and probably 10 of them had to do with the Johnson or the Pavarello. And not so much as an email or an answer. Maybe it had to do with women sleeping on the floor by their abductors, sexual harassers on the staff, theft of belongings, which is yet again a problem this year. Just like all these municipal codes, you neglected to do anything about it or answer it. My understanding is that you're building a new municipal code on where people can live and sleep. There's a lot of different words about what's going on with it. It would be really nice to know when we'll be able to see what we might have to retort to, to know how long that would be in council, to have any idea of what's coming. If you heard what Mr. Bryant said tonight, I would say that most people in this position don't even know this change is about to occur. That they may only have 12 hours in a space before they have to pick up and leave again. Or that the entire city looks like a no-touch Elmo because of all the places you can't stay. So many options besides just driving people out.
Anyone else tonight? Seeing none in the room and none online, we will move on to our schedule of committee meetings. Ms. Raybain?
Thanks, Mayor Hess. Let me share my screen and I'll share tonight's committee schedule so folks watching can follow along. Folks, tonight we are setting up committee meetings for this coming Wednesday, October 18th. And the first meeting of the day is at 9:00 AM, continues to 10:00 AM. It's the Landes and Planning Committee. And they will be discussing a proposal to eliminate tourist homes as a permitted use in residential districts. The Public Safety, Health and Operations Committee will meet after that from 10:10 until 11:15. Be taking up three items. The first is the State Homeland Security Program, Montana Disaster and Emergency Service Equipment Grant, Charter Communications Cable Franchise Renewal, and the Missoula Police Department 2022 Annual Report. The Public Works and Mobility Committee will meet from 11:25 until 12:10. They'll be taking up appointments to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board, the South Avenue Safe Streets Grant Agreement, the Interlocal Agreement with Missoula County for the South Avenue Safe Streets Grant Project. The Housing Redevelopment and Community Programs Committee meets following that from 12:45 in the afternoon to 2:45. They'll be taking up the Missoula Housing Authority Annual Presentation and a houseless data update. The Budget and Finance Committee will meet from 2:55 in the afternoon to 4:25. And they will be taking up an amendment to city council rule to come into compliance with a Ninth Circuit decision in Acosta versus the city of Costa Mesa. And finally rounding out the day is the Climate Conservation and Parks Committee. They'll be meeting from 4:35 to 5 o'clock, taking up an energy performance contract associated with the city's aquatics facilities and also the fiscal. And also the Fiscal Year 2024 Community Benefit Organization Grant Approval for Climate Smart Missoula and Home Resource.
Thank you, Ms. Raybin. And I understand we may have a change to the committee schedule, Ms. Jones?
So I think that was already incorporated. So that Climate Conservation and Parks will be the last meeting. And that's what she read. Yes, thanks.
All right. Any additional changes to the committee schedule? Seeing none, that will stand as presented. And we can move on to our consent agenda. So items on our consent agenda were generally approved unanimously in our city council committees. We save a little time on Mondays by taking those up as a package. Ms. Raybin, our city clerk will read the list aloud and we'll invite comment on the items before we vote. Ms. Raybin.
Thanks, Mayor Hess. Let's take a look at the six items that we have on tonight's consent agenda. Let me make that text just a tiny bit bigger so folks following at home can maybe see it a little better. Item number one, it's always is to approve paying the city's bills. City Council did not meet. And so we have ratification of accounts payable for checks dated October 10th, 2023. We didn't meet over the Indigenous Peoples' Day holidays. So we're doing a catch-up here. Those bills are totaling $2,220,722.30. The second item is to approve accounts payable for checks dated tomorrow, October 17th, for $2,132,397.84. Number three is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a new four-year collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Machinists that represents employees in the city's Fleet Services Division. Number four is to set a public hearing for Monday, October 23rd, to provide the public with the opportunity to comment on the pathways to removing obstacles to housing or a pro-housing grant application. Number five is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign and execute a contract. Sign and execute, that's kind of the same thing. Prove and authorize the mayor to sign a contract for $211,476 with the Pavarello Center for the provision of services and programs specific to people without a house in Missoula. And providing comprehensive outreach services to that same population funded by the city of Missoula. And finally, folks, number six is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign agreements with the following community-based organizations for fiscal year 2024. Arts Missoula in the amount of $202,350. The International Coral Festival, the amount of $12,000. Missoula Aging Services in the amount of $368,844.95. And the Partnership Health Center in the amount of $35,000.
Thank you, Ms. Raybin. Is there any public comment on our consent agenda? Sure.
Ladies spoke upon the Pavarello Center. The issues that I see now that I stay there on and off is this. The staff is pretty cool. The problem is their hands are tied. If, and I've stayed in a lot of shelters across the country. We need help. We need individuals that can actually help us and understand what we're going through. I understand you guys got finances and finances are small. But if you can fit us into your scheduled time to where we can accumulate some type of understanding, that would be helpful. You know, I know you guys are busy doing what you do. But in order to solve the issue, we actually need help. The Pavarello is a beautiful place, but it's like any other institution that helps homeless. Eventually, the water main is going to break. And that resource is not going to be around anymore. We need help. We do. I'm part of a community of homeless. So I'm not, I usually don't ask for this. You find people, figure out what your nice complimentary brains, how you guys can help the individuals that really need help. There's limited housing. There's limited anything for individuals unless they make $48,000. Erase the red tape. Help us. We need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on our consent agenda tonight? All right, seeing none.
Wasn't totally, did I say here $2 million for the Pavarello?
So Pavarello Center contract is $211,476.
$211,000. What's that all about?
So, Mr. Spitzbacher, we don't do a back and forth during this. You're welcome to provide some comments and we can, we can get you some information after the meeting. But we don't do a back and forth during, during the meeting. Thanks. Anyone else tonight? All right. Seeing none, any questions or discussion from council members on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Raybin, we can have a roll call vote, please.
Okay, on the consent agenda. Anderson.
Yes.
Bessera.
Yes.
Carlinho.
Yes.
Contos. Mr. Contos absent this evening?
Yes, he's absent this evening.
Oh, sorry, I missed that.
Apologies.
Let me fix that briefly here so I have the right tally. Palmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Vasika.
Yes.
And West.
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your votes? That is 11 ayes and zero nays. And it passes.
And the consent agenda is approved. We don't have any comments tonight from city staff or the various city entities. We do have one special presentation in the form of a proclamation. Whereas chronic recurrent multifocal osteomalitis is an auto-inflammatory disease affecting the bones of the body, causing pain, lesions, and inflammation, which can eventually lead to fracturing or breaking of the bones or other physical problems. And whereas the path to a diagnosis is often a long one with many other possibilities that need to be ruled out, delaying access to appropriate medical care for those who are affected. And the limited treatments that are available are painful and expensive. And whereas the severity of the symptoms of CRMO and the limited public awareness of the, of the disease can cause patients to be isolated and lead to depression. CRMO is often called an invisible illness as many of the children affected appear fine upon first glance, but deeper down are dealing with high levels of pain, frustration, and sadness. And whereas the goal of CRMO Awareness Month is to raise public awareness and, and understanding of the disorder, which has numerous manifestations affecting children of all ages, races, genders, and backgrounds. Now, therefore, I, Jordan Hess, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the state of Montana, hereby recognize October 2023 as Chronic Recurrent Multifocal Osteomalitis Awareness Month. And I want to thank Sean and Sierra and wish them well. I am happy to help spread the word. And Sean, appreciate your, your courage and your steadfastness in, in raising awareness of this condition. Wish you all the best. We can move on. We have one item of final consideration tonight. And that is an ordinance revising Missoula Municipal Code, Title 8.02, adopting the Missoula City-County Health Code by reference to incorporate revisions to Regulation III regarding solid waste management. And as approved by the City-County Board of Health and amending 8.28 to repeal the bear buffer zone. We have Ms. Terrio here with our staff report. And Ms. Terrio, do we have any additional information that has emerged since the public hearing? You don't need to go through the whole presentation, but you're welcome to, to update us.
I don't think I have any additional information except that Jamie Johnkell is here from Fish Wildlife and Parks and can give you just the last couple of weeks about bears if you're interested in that. And then I can pull up anything from the previous presentation if you want onto, you know, on a PowerPoint.
Great. Mr. Johnkell, you want to give us an update?
Thanks for having me tonight. James Johnkell, Montana Fish, Wildlife and Parks. Again, it's not as bad as last year, but a lot of bears have poured into the Missoula Valley in the last week and a half. In the Rattlesnake, we've got the three family groups and probably 12 lone bears east Missoula, at least two. Milltown Bonner area, 10 plus, Big Flat, three or four. Patty Canyon, lots of activity. It's all black bear. We do have that grizzly south of town still in the Florence Lowell River bottoms. And we still have that grizzly working the Clinton area and then in the North Hills as well. No garbage incidents with, with grizzlies. Had some pretty strange things happen in some of the homeless camps. We've been visiting with quite a few of the homeless folks and encouraging them to actually sort of pull up and camp together just so that, you know, there's more eyes, you know? And then trying to keep someone staying in camp all day to kind of guard, kind of occupied camp type thing. But I, I hope this is the peak, but I'm sure we've still got a few more bears in the high country that are dreaming about apples and garbage.
Thank you, Mr. Johnkell. Any questions from council? Ms. Vasika.
Oh, don't sit down yet. I was wondering how many injuries and/or fatalities have happened in western Montana regarding bears and human attacks?
How many injuries regarding bears?
Bears.
In Montana since when?
In western Montana. And I, I just feel like I've seen a lot of bear injuries lately in the news.
It's been an odd year throughout the Rocky Mountain West and even up in Canada. It seems like, you know, something must be in the water. But yeah, there's a lot of interaction going on between grizzlies and, and humans and hunters and such. Some strange stuff with black bears too. Even though we had a really good, you know, summer here with lots of berry production, something is sort of missing this fall where we've just been seeing bears, you know, feeding on some different food sources that are a little different. Like, for the first time, I've documented bears eating juniper berries. So each year is a little bit different. And just something odd about this year. There have been an awful lot of interactions with humans and bears.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none. This came out of Public Safety, Health and Operations. So we'll go to Ms. Anderson for motion, please.
Okay, great. Thanks so much. I will. The one drawback of zooming in remotely is limited screen options here. So just give me one moment. Okay. Sorry. All right. I move that we adopt an ordinance revising Chapter 8.02 Missoula Municipal Code entitled Missoula City-County Health Code adopted by reference to adopt and revise revisions of Regulations III Solid Waste Management as approved by the City-County Health Board on August 17th, 2003, and amend the Missoula Municipal Code, Section 8.28, Rubbish and Garbage, to repeal the Missoula Bear Buffer Zone, to repeal the Missoula Bear Buffer Zone requirements and to change the penalties for violation for criminal misdemeanor to civil infraction.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. We'll go to public comment next. Would anyone like to comment on the proposed ordinance?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Serene. I'm a professional bear biologist. I'm a member of the Missoula Bear Smart Working Group. And I want to thank you for considering this change. We think it's really important. We worked really hard as citizens to come up with ideas to help keep bears and people apart in Missoula. The garbage issue is about 49% of the conflicts. We can solve that. We're well in the way to making Missoula a bear smart community. And there's other things we can do. Well, once we get the garbage issue passed, then we'll move on. So we really appreciate your support of this. And we live in bear habitat. We need to do the right thing. This is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serene. Anyone else tonight? All right, seeing none. Council discussion. Mr. Carlinho.
Didn't want to get us too far off topic, but I do have that one amendment that we talked about before on this topic. So I just wanted to move to amend that we delete Section 8.28.090, the distribution of handbills that we talked about before. And I can share that on the screen real quick. That's helpful.
Okay. I'm going to ask our city attorney if, since this is noticed specifically about this section of health code, I'm not sure if that's in order. Mr. Sudbury, can you, can you weigh in on whether or not we need to take this up as a separate item or whether or not it would be appropriate to, or Ms. Raybin, or whether or not it would be appropriate to take this up tonight? This might just need to be a separate referral that would probably be a pretty quick cleanup item.
Yeah, I mean, the referral talks about 802 and 828 generally to talk about bear buffer zones. It would be hard to think that somebody was put on notice that distribution of handbills was going to be on the agenda. I would suggest that it gets referred as its own item. But to say that it's clearly out of order, I don't know if I could go that far.
Okay. I guess, Mr. Carlinho, would you be amenable to referring this? I think it'd be a really simple cleanup item, but it'd be most appropriate to have it meant.
Yeah, we can do it another time.
Okay, great. And we're happy to help if you, if you need assistance getting that, getting that going. You just can't put any handbills out about that meeting, I guess, until. I'm just joking. Okay. Back to the main motion. Mr. Carlinho?
I can speak to the main motion. I think this is a great step forward and I'm glad that we're taking, taking, taking steps to, as an entire community, to ensure that, that we're getting our trash together and making sure that bears aren't getting into it. You know, we, you know, we're living in bear habitat. And I think it's important that as people that we can coexist with, with the wildlife here. And after we get done with this first half of attractants, I hope we can move swiftly to, to, to work on the other half of the bear attractants as well. And ultimately, we really need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to stop the climate crisis. Otherwise, the bears are going to be in danger that way too. But I think this is a great step forward. And thanks to the Bear Smart Working Group for making this happen.
Thank you. Ms. Cheryl?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everyone on the Bear Smart Working Group. This was a collaborative effort. It has been a long time coming. And I am very excited that we've gotten to this point. And I'm excited to support it tonight.
Ms. Vasika.
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to share some public comment that was emailed to me. Yeah, I just wanted to share some public comment that was emailed to me, and I wanted to thank staff for sending that over. I just wanted to let folks know that, I guess, according to the minutes that I read of the meeting for the the Missoula City County Board of Health meeting that I don't usually go to, apparently you can purchase your own can at Ace, but it's not recommend or Ace or any other place like that. It's not recommended because if you do, you're liable for their own damages. And if you rent your own from either of the trash service companies in the area, when you rent it from them, you have no liability as far as they just don't last as long as what people think they're going to last. And so the bears will still chew on it and everything, and so it'll get damaged, and so they'll replace it free of charge, from my understanding, if you do rent one. And then I also wanted to let folks know if they think that they don't have a bear problem in that area. Apparently, there's a big dog problem in the Potomac area as well. So it's not just for bears, it's for nuisance dogs as well. And so I'm usually not a big fan of a government intervention, but everybody that I've seen the public comment for in this area, it seems like it is drastically needed. So I am happy to support this.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Vasika. Ms. Jones?
I'm not going to add much new, but I also want to say thank you to the Bear Working Group. I know how hard this project was. It was months and months of work, but we are lucky we have great expertise in this valley, and we could draw on that. So thank you to everyone that served on that. And the Bear Buffer Zone, I think, is probably one of the most gorgeous areas to live in in Missoula. It's a privilege to live there, and I think it's good to start adopting some practices that respect the wildlife because they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, and now we need to do what we need to do.
Ms. Basara?
Thank you. I too want to add my gratitude to everyone who worked on this ordinance and supported this regulation. Thank you for sharing your time and expertise with the community. Thanks.
Thanks. Anyone else tonight? Ms. Jordan?
Yeah, I just want to add my thanks to the group that put this together. I think it's really exciting to come up with great data-driven ideas that are going to ensure that we can live cohesively with native wildlife. It's pretty upsetting to find out that we're the biggest problem in leaving our trash out for these these bears, and I'm super excited that we're going to get on top of this and make sure that they can live peacefully as well as probably us as well. So thank you all for the work that you put into this.
Just, I'd echo my thanks. This working group has been at it for a long time and really appreciate all that you've done and appreciate the final product. I don't see any additional comments, so we can have a roll call vote, please.
Okay, on the ordinance, Basara?
Yes.
Carlini?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
But any of you like to change your vote? That is 11 ayes and one absent, and it passes.
And the ordinance is approved. And again, thank you for, thank you for all your work on this. This has been a labor of love and a long effort for a lot of people in this community. I really appreciate that. We have no additional items for final consideration. We do have five public hearings tonight, and we'll take them in the order listed. We'll start with our fiscal year 2023 third quarter budget amendments, and we have Lee Griffin with our staff report. Ms. Griffin?
Thank you, Mayor. Lee Griffin, City Finance Director. Tonight, I am bringing a resolution for the third quarter of fiscal year 2023 budget amendments to the appropriations for 2023. Now, just for folks watching from home, this might seem a bit late. FY23 ended on June 30, but taking, bringing budget amendments to City Council does take a considerable amount of time, including all of the notifications that we have to do. And we will be bringing fourth quarter budget amendments for the prior fiscal year once we are done with our audit, so folks understand what we're doing today. I will share my screen. Now, this budget amendment will increase city revenues by $4,439 and appropriations or expenditures by $190,398. We do have an exhibit attached that outlines each of these items, which have come before City Council for approval at various other meetings prior to this point. So this is really a very administrative thing that we need to do in order to have our budget in line with state law. And I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. With that, I will open the public hearing. If anyone wants to make a comment, you're welcome to come on up. All right, seeing no one in the room or online, this public hearing will remain open until next week, so you're welcome to, you're welcome to comment up until then. Any questions from council members? Seeing none. We will hold this public open until final consideration next week, and we can move on to item 9.2, which is our Public Works Fee Schedule. Ms. Griffin?
Thank you. City council members may remember that during the FY24 budget process, we had some resolutions that increased fees at that time. The Public Works Resolution that we were bringing forward has a few increases to it as well as consolidating all of the Public Works fees into one schedule. It previously had been, some of them had been wrapped up in with a community planning, development, and innovation fee schedules. I will pull those up. So one thing I wanted folks to note on the exhibit that we have in these fee schedules, you can see I'm down at the bottom, I was already reviewing it earlier this evening. These are grouped by sort of types of activity. Here we have engineering, right-of-way use in construction, paving, accessibility, asphalt penalties, excavation, sewer fees. And this is the item I wanted to note for folks. When we see an item highlighted in yellow that increased to that particular fee has already come before City Council and been approved via resolution or ordinance, usually within the last six to nine months. And but we, once again, wanted to have these consolidated onto one schedule, so we're just noting that so folks understand. And we have water fees. And we finish up with stormwater, county utility connections, fence fees, and some special improvement fees. And I am here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rabine. With that, I will open the public hearing if anyone wants to make a comment. All right, seeing no one in the room, and for the record, no one online. Questions from council? All right. Similar to the last item, we will hold this open until next week and take it up for final consideration on October 23. Thank you, Ms. Griffin. We have three land use-related items that are all with regard to cleaning up our code to comply with with 2023 legislative bills that pass out of the legislature. We'll take those in the order listed as well, and we'll start with city subdivision amendments. And I'll turn it over to Jen Gress for our staff report. Ms. Gress?
Thank you, Mayor Hess. I'm going to start sharing my screen here. Okay. Can we see that?
Not yet, but.
Not yet. It looks like it's a little slow. You wouldn't mind telling me when it shows up?
Sure.
Let's try it again. Looks like my computer has froze up. Do you hear me?
We can hear you, and we just see a black screen.
All right. I'm going to turn my camera off. Nope. I think I might just need just a minute, please.
Okay, sure. Okay, we do see your presentation now.
All right. If you don't mind, I'm going to leave my camera off.
Sure.
My apologies. So yes, good evening, council members. For the record, I am Jen Gress of Community Planning, Development, and Innovation. And tonight's presentation is the public hearing and final consideration for proposed amendments to the city subdivision regulations based on the recent legislative changes. I'll provide some background for you, explain the goal of this project, provide a brief overview of the relevant state bills, and point out how those bills affected our current regulations. I'll also ask you to approve the amendment package tonight. So because I gave an in-depth presentation during Land Use and Planning Committee on September 27, I won't be showing you any amendments tonight, but will give you more of an overview of the project. Specific amendment language can be found in the document called "Subdivision Regulations: State Law Changes City Council," and it's dated October 16. And it's also attached to this item in Esri. There have been some typographical changes made to the amendments between the LUP meeting and tonight's hearing, and I'll go over those at the end of the presentation. And again, if you have specific questions, I'll be available. The Montana State Legislature meets every two years to discuss possible amendments to state law for various topics, including subdivision review. The laws establish the minimum rules of review and submit for subdivision projects, as well as the criteria they are reviewed by. These minimums must be administered by local agencies as soon as they're in effect. Our office has been implementing those state law changes that may already be in effect since their adoption, even if they haven't been formally adopted into our local regulations. So we came before you with subdivision regulation changes last year, getting our regulations up to speed with past year's law changes. And this year, we're addressing the amendments from the 2023 legislative session. The proposed amendments are narrowly focused and will integrate this year's legislative changes with additional changes to help make the regulations more usable and understandable. All of the bills represented in this presentation are in effect as of October 1, 2023. Most changes are mandated by the legislative process, and most jurisdictions will be required to comply. They reflect many best practices and support the Aramisula Project. The subdivision amendments are part of the first phase of state-manded code amendments that the city is undertaking to create a new baseline for the Aramisula Project. So the goal of this project is to amend the subdivision regulations in a targeted manner by incorporating the 2023 legislative changes into our local regulations, again, helping to create an updated base for the code reform project currently being worked on. And as noted a minute ago, this project will have a narrow scope with amendments aimed at integrating this year's legislative changes with additional changes to help make the regulations more understandable and usable. During the 2023 legislative session, six bills were passed affecting our subdivision regulations, and those include House Bill 211, Senate Bill 131, Senate Bill 152, Senate Bill 158, Senate Bill 170, and Senate Bill 331. Staff has also identified a number of amendments not specifically related to state land use legislation but are necessary to include in this update. And these amendments will move the review procedures for condominium and townhouse proposals from Article 4 to Article 8. Will include state law changes that were overlooked in our last update, will correct formatting issues and cross-references, and will revise Article 8 to make it more usable and understandable. There are a total of 35 amendments being proposed across five different subdivision articles. Amendments are proposed in Articles 1, 2, 4, 5, and 8. The first bill is House Bill 211, which covers amendments to three current review procedures. First, it revises and clarifies the subsequent hearing process by clarifying information a governing body may consider when determining if a subsequent hearing is required for a subdivision. Changes to our current regulations include amendments to the Major Subdivision Review Procedure section to clarify how new information is addressed, depending on who's providing the new information and when it's being provided in the process. House Bill 211 clarifies that process and also changed our regulations to allow an applicant the ability to amend their application after sufficiency and prior to City Council public hearing. Additionally, the review time for a subsequent hearing will be suspended until the hearing is complete. Currently, only 60 days are allowed to complete the subsequent hearing process. Second, the bill removes the need for unnecessary hearings for phases of subdivisions that occur close to the original approval time by changing the timing for when phase development public hearings are required. It specifies the timeframe a request to proceed may be made to the governing body and clarifies when conditions may be amended or imposed based on changed circumstances. Amendments were made to the regulations in the preliminary and final plat section for the phase development review process. The regulations now specify a public hearing for phase development reviews only required for those phases preceding five or more years after the preliminary plat approval. Currently, a public hearing for phase development review is required prior to a developer commencing with installation of improvements, prior to filing any final plat for a phase. And this change affects phase developments that have been deemed sufficient for preliminary plat review on or after October 1 of 2023. The premise on review of conditions remains the same. The hearing is held to determine if the findings of fact and conclusions of law from preliminary plat review are still valid and would justify amending any existing condition or imposing additional conditions on that particular phase prior to final plat review for that phase. All conditions must be met prior to final plat approval for any remaining phases. Changes also limit an applicant's ability to request final plat approval no more than one year or less than 90 calendar days in advance of submitting the final plat application. City Council has the ability to amend or impose additional conditions of approval through the hearing process. And lastly, House Bill 211 allows a subdivision to use the expedited subdivision review process, even if a variance from subdivision regulations is requested, and clarifies they need to be served by municipal water and sewer. The bill also allows conditions to be placed on the project. That change to our regulations will clarify expedited subdivision projects must be served by municipal water and sewer, and this is just a clarification of current practice. Other changes will remove any reference to variances not being allowed and will extend the review time for projects requesting a variance from 35 to 45 working days for more time to address a more complex review. Senate Bill 152 is our second bill and amends the date used to determine if a subdivision can be reviewed as a first minor. The date changes from July 1, 1973, to October 1, 2003. Our local regulations review first and subsequent minors the same, and a change in the law doesn't affect that. However, an amendment has been made to clarify the newly created administrative minor subdivision and minor subdivisions are both considered minor subdivisions when being reviewed. Senate Bill 170 exempts minor subdivisions from the full subdivision review process, allowing them to be reviewed through an administrative process. Projects requesting administrative review must be within city limits, need to be served by city sewer and water, must provide existing legal and physical access to each lot, and does not require a variance from the subdivision rules. Proposed amendments created a new process section to administer administrative minor subdivision review, and this new section was guided by Senate Bill 170 and simplifies steps for review and approval of certain minor subdivisions. The new section includes an applicability statement and a list of elements an administrative minor subdivision is exempt from. A process section was created specifying notification of the project and that administrative review must be done within 30 working days. An appeal section was also included directing an appeal to the City Council. An amendment to the existing regulations created a definition of administrative minor subdivision. Senate Bills 131, 158, and 331 all affect Article 8. And because Article 8 was both reorganized and amended by legislative bills, I'll cover the three bills and all of Article 8 together. First, I'll cover what the three bills require. Senate Bill 131 requires the governing body to review and exempt subdivision within 20 working days of receipt of a complete application. No conditions can be applied to the division or aggregation under this exemption, except conditions necessary for compliance with portions of state law. Senate Bill 158 exempts family transfer divisions within an approved platted subdivision from further division review if the split creates a parcel of a size allowed by the subdivision. Parcels outside a platted subdivision but located in a zoning district are exempt from further subdivision review and must be at least five acres in size unless the zoning district allows smaller lots. Additionally, family transfer divisions made outside a platted subdivision may be transferred to that immediate family member regardless of that person's age and may be owned jointly with that family member's spouse. Senate Bill 331 continues to exempt condominium and townhouse development projects when the proposal is in accordance with local zoning, but it limits the zoning to specific local zoning regulations. It adds that a determination on exempt status is required within 20 working days of receipt of a complete application. It also adds that this form of ownership cannot be prohibited. A determination of exempt status cannot be conditioned, and the use cannot be required to go through conditional use process. So changes to the current regulations begin with a reorganization of Article 8 to provide clarity between the exemptions that do not require zoning compliance and those that are required to meet zoning. It also simplified steps and removed redundancy. Existing family transfer law language is being removed and replaced by new legislation with guidance from Senate Bill 158. Regulations now address family transfer divisions inside a platted subdivision and amend the regulations for transfers outside a platted subdivision. Townhome exemption development regulations have been removed from Article 4 and placed in Article 8, the exemptions chapter. The regulations continue to permit townhome exemption developments that comply with zoning. The ability to condition a TED project has been removed, and the timeline for review is limited to 20 days like other exemption processes. Additionally, staff evaluated the current zoning standards for review of a TED project and retained those that complied with the categories in Senate Bill 331. The biggest process change for Article 8 is the elimination of the requirement for public hearings for many exemption types. Overtime City Council added into our subdivision regulations a public hearing requirement for certain types. for certain types of exemption applications. And with the state law changes limiting the review process of exemptions to twenty working days, those public hearing requirements will be eliminated. Our last set of amendments were prompted by Senate Bill one sixty-one, which was adopted by the legislature in two thousand and twenty-one. And this bill exempted expedited subdivisions from having to provide a community impact report and an environmental assessment. And these amendments were missed during the update in two thousand and twenty-two, so the exemption language is being included now. Four minor changes were made to the proposed amendments between the land use and planning meeting and September twenty-seventh and tonight's version. The newest set of amendments is dated October sixteenth. Changes include correction of formatting in Article two, cross-references in both Article five and Article eight, and a correction of formatting in Section eight dash oh four oh. And there was no content changes to any of the regulations associated with these amendments. Public notice for this project began with a request for agency and public comment, and we created a project page on the Engage Missoula website to inform the public and gather additional comments. Planning Board held a public hearing on September nineteenth, and we provided an informational update at the Land Use and Planning Committee September twenty-seventh, and then, of course, the public hearing tonight. No comments were received from outside agencies. Two public comments were received and are included in Escrib. However, neither pertained to the legislative changes being proposed. Planning Board recommended City Council approve the proposed amendments as presented. And because all the state legislative changes affecting the subdivision regulations presented tonight are already in effect, we're asking for final consideration of the proposed amendments tonight. Staff recommends City Council approve the resolution to amend the city subdivision regulations incorporating state law changes along with limited necessary amendments not specifically related to state land use legislation as presented tonight and including minor editing changes as noted. And this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Gress. So, with that, I will open the public hearing, and we will, as Ms. Gress mentioned, we will conclude this item tonight if all goes according to plan. So, feel free to come on up if you have any, if you have any comments on the subdivision And seeing none, and no one online. Just going to pause for a moment. I know we received written comment from one of the online participants. So, this is your opportunity to comment on the subdivision amendments if so desired. All right, with that, I will close the public hearing, and this came out of Landis and Planning. Mr. Nugent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move Council adopt a resolution amending the Missoula City subdivision regulations, Article one introductory provisions, Article two definitions, Article four review and approval procedures, Article five submittal requirements, and Article eight exempt land divisions, incorporating applicable state legislative changes from the two thousand and twenty-three legislative session, along with limited necessary amendments not specifically related to state land use legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent. Any comment on a council discussion on this? Ms. West, and then Mr. Carlinow.
I actually just have a question, and I guess my question's related to all the twenty-day deadlines and, I guess, internal capacity and workflow. I know when there are statutory deadlines for certain things to get done, those are prioritized. And so, I'm just wondering if you could maybe speak a little bit to how this changes workflow and how, you know, for suddenly inundated with subdivisions, how other projects that need dealt with get dealt with.
I'm going to let Mary McCray answer that question. She is the section supervisor that will be dealing with those mostly.
Ms. McCray?
Yes, Mary McCray, Permits and Land Use Manager in CPDI Development Services. You're correct, Ms. West. We will have to prioritize all the projects with statutory deadlines. So, we currently prioritize anything related to subdivision, and now subdivision exemptions will also be prioritized ahead of other projects. We are, we have staff that process some of the other projects. It takes a few years' experience to be able to process subdivisions, and some of those new staff will be processing the subdivision exemption. So, you know, there are projects that don't have any statutory deadlines like rezonings, conditional uses, annexations, and we get to those as we can. They will, you know, probably wait in the queue a little bit longer, though.
Thank you.
Mr. Carlinow?
I had some questions as well. Looking at the public comments that we got, it appears that Senate Bill four oh seven prohibited external boards from being the determining body for design review applications. And I'm wondering if we looked at letting the City Council be the deciding body instead of the Board of Adjustments to comply with Senate Bill four oh seven, or why is the Board of Adjustments different than the Design Review Board here?
So, that's coming up in one of our other hearings in just a moment here.
Oh, I thought we were taking them all together. Okay.
Yep. Okay. All right. Any additional questions or comments on the subdivision rigs? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor, and we can have a roll call vote. Ms. Raye Biden?
Okay, on the resolution, Carlinow.
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Buseka?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Becerra?
Yes.
If any of you'd like to change your vote, that is eleven ayes and one absent, and it passes.
Thank you, Ms. Raye Biden, and thank you, Ms. Gress, and all the staff who put together or who worked to assure compliance. It's a tall order to put that together, and appreciate it all. We can move on to our, our fourth of five public hearings, and this is a similar ordinance regarding Title eighteen floodplain regulations. And Cassie Trippard has our staff report.
Right, can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. So, I'm Cassie Trippard, a planning supervisor and the floodplain administrator in CPDI. Today, I'm presenting a proposed ordinance to amend Title eighteen, the City Floodplain Hazard Management Regulations. The City of Missoula participates in the National Flood Insurance Program. This means that the federal government provides flood insurance to the community and that the city must adopt floodplain development regulations meeting the minimum standards in federal law. Montana state law has higher standards than federal law that the city must also comply with. When portions of our local regulations get outdated due to changes in state or federal law and guidance, the city is notified by the Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation or the Federal Emergency Management Agency. And I'll be referencing Montana DNRC and FEMA a lot throughout this presentation. From the time DNRC or FEMA notifies the city of required changes to our regulations, City Council has six months to adopt the amendments. However, we are running on a much shorter timeline due to a new flood insurance study for the city becoming effective this month. And I'll provide more detail on the new study shortly. There are four types of amendments proposed in the ordinance. Appendix A of the regulations lists all effective flood maps and studies for the city. This amendment is required by DNRC and FEMA. The second type of amendments are language updates identified and required by DNRC as a result of updates to the state's model regulations. Staff reviewed the rest of Title eighteen against the state model regulations and identified additional language that was inconsistent with the model regulations. And last, staff used this as an opportunity to correct small errors throughout the code. Missoula County and the City of Missoula share a flood insurance study. The flood insurance study contains all of the flood risk data for the community, and the study is used to identify base flood elevations of regulated floodplains. This data is used to implement the regulations, which include elevating or floodproofing structures two feet above base flood elevation to ensure they are reasonably safe from flooding. The city and county are currently working to remap the Bitterroot, Clark Fork, and Clearwater Rivers. The new maps and data for the Bitterroot and Clark Fork rivers are not ready to be adopted yet. However, the data and maps for the Clearwater River is ready to be adopted. The Clearwater River and associated floodplain are not in city limits, but because we share a flood insurance study with the county, the new flood insurance study with the updated Clearwater River information must be adopted by the city, and there are no changes to the regulatory data within city limits. A letter of map revision is an official document from FEMA that changes the flood insurance rate maps, flood zones, and elevation data for a particular area. This year, a letter of map revision for a portion of Butler Creek became effective, and prior to the revision, this portion of Butler Creek had no detailed flood study and no base flood elevations to regulate to. The property owners got together and had a study completed, which resulted in updates to the floodplain map. Appendix A at the end of Title eighteen lists all of the regulatory studies and maps for the City of Missoula. Appendix A needs to be updated to reference the new flood insurance study, firm index numbers, and the Butler Creek Letter of Map Revision. Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation provides model regulations for communities to use that ensure the communities comply with the state and federal law. The City of Missoula uses the DNRC model regulations, and doing so makes keeping our regulations up to date very straightforward. This year, DNRC updated the model regulations, and they sent the updated model to the city and stated that we must update our local regulations in compliance with the changes. The first required update to Section one point seven floodplain administrator, or that is, the first required update. The amendment is really minor. The regulation said the floodplain administrator is officially appointed. This is not actually how the City of Missoula assigns the job. The updated language just says that Development Services Division is responsible for floodplain administration. There are several required updates to definitions. DNRC added a definition for historic structures and maintenance. Historic structures are considered when looking at variances and certain exceptions. Maintenance is exempt from some standards as well, so defining it is important. And the current definition for start of construction was outdated and way out of compliance with the DNRC requirements. It was from a nineteen eighty-eight resolution and is proposed to be updated. The definition for special flood hazard area was reorganized and revised to include information about its purpose. An error and substantial damage was corrected, and the definition for substantial improvement was amended to provide clarity and more legible language. There are several changes to Section four regulated flood hazard area, which we'll cover on the following slides. And last, an incorrect reference to state law was removed from Section ten point four point four. Following Land Use and Planning Committee, we received a follow-up on a public comment made at the hearing, which identified a line of code in the definition of substantial improvement that was not in the DNRC model regulations. Updates to this definition were already proposed, but staff missed eliminating the last line of the definition. It had been eliminated on a previous draft of the model regulations, so staff updated the ordinance before you today to account for this change. Since that was missed, staff went through the definitions again to look for other discrepancies. The model regulations had additional clarification in the definition of base flood elevation, and the amendment shown here clarifies how base flood elevation is measured in floodzone AO. This is already how we measure it in zone AO, but the amendment provides better guidance to code users. Looking at Section four point one, DNRC added number three to clarify that when no federal flood data exists, staff can use other reliable sources. This aligns with our current regulations, which requires property owners to complete a study before developing next to a waterway with no federal study. Really, it's just adding additional clarification. And the updates referencing Appendix A were not required by DNRC. The model regulations list applicable studies and maps in Section four, whereas our regulations use Appendix A. And the current regulations were walking a strange line between referencing Appendix A and incorrectly referencing Section four, so staff are proposing to clean this up. Moving on to Section four point two, there are no real regulatory changes here. The new language in four point two point two creates a better relationship between this piece of code and the following pieces of code. See, there we go. Still looking at Section four point two, DNRC is clarifying that the words "proposed development" also include proposed new uses and substantial improvements. This was already how we implemented the regulations, but now it's more clear to users. And four point two point six also does not include regulatory amendments but just uses better language. Section four point three covers the process for amending the flood insurance rate maps. This section is currently very difficult to understand. The amendments provided by DNRC do not change any local, state, or federal processes or regulations. This section has been rewritten for legibility, and the regulations using the term or were using the term alteration for this process. In reality, we use the term "letter of map change," and "letter of map revision" for Butler Creek is a "letter of map change," for example. So, the regulations are proposed to be more direct by stating the actual FEMA process used to alter the maps. We see similar changes here. This piece covers what is required to be included in a conditional letter of map revision application to FEMA. DNRC struck the language about the application to FEMA requiring information about public benefit. This is not required by FEMA or state law, and the approval of a conditional letter of map revision comes from FEMA, so it's unnecessary to have additional requirements and local regulations that they won't actually consider. And the amendments in this slide to Section four point three also clarify current practice. When DNRC sends required updates, they just send us the model regulations with track changes. Staff are recommending amendments to fully bring our code into compliance with the model regulations in addition to those identified by DNRC. The first is a small change to the title of Section one point two, and the change is shown there in red. Four definitions were missing from Title eighteen. They are all basic common terms defined elsewhere in state and federal law. However, including these common terms in our regulations helps the public use the regulations. There were minor updates to Section six point one to use more direct language about projects that can be permitted in the floodway and the process for doing so. This is just clarifying language and does not affect how we regulate the floodway. Last, staff used this as an opportunity to correct various errors in the code. There are organizational corrections. Oh, the lights just turned off. Hold on. Organizational corrections to Sections one point four, nine point ten, and one point five. I covered correcting references to Appendix A in Section four earlier in the presentation. And Section nine point three had spelling errors. Section ten point two had a more substantial error. This error in Section ten point two, which covers requirements for developing in the flood fringe portion of the floodplain, this section provides options for making sure a structure is reasonably safe from flooding. One of these options is elevating the building on fill. Number one in Section ten point two point thirteen said the fill must be at or above base flood elevation. However, number six said that it needed to be half a foot above base flood elevation. When the higher standard, number six, was adopted, number one was supposed to be removed, and the proposed amendment moves the higher requirement up to number one and eliminates the conflict. Though staff recommend City Council adopt an ordinance generally amending Title eighteen, the City of Missoula Floodplain Hazard Management Regulations, to incorporate revisions to Appendix A depicting updated flood insurance studies and map revisions, and to incorporate revisions to several sections in alignment with the updated Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation model ordinance. And the effective date of the ordinance would be thirty days after adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trippard. With that, I will open the public hearing if anyone wants to comment on the floodplain regulations. All right. Seeing none, and give a moment for folks to raise their hand online. All right. No one online either. With that, I will close the public hearing, and this also was in Landis and Planning. Mr. Nugent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the City Council adopt an ordinance generally amending Title eighteen Missoula Municipal Code, the City of Missoula Floodplain Hazard Management Regulations, to incorporate revisions to Appendix A depicting updated flood insurance studies and map revisions, and to incorporate revisions to Section one point two, one point four, one point five, one point seven, two, four point one, four point two, four point three, six point one, eight point four, nine point ten, nine point thirteen, nine point fifteen, ten point two, ten point three, and ten point four, in alignment with the updated Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation Model Ordinance. The effective date of the ordinance is thirty days after adoption.
Thank you. The motion's in order. Any questions or comments? Ms. Jones?
in alignment with the updated Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation Model Ordinance. The effective date of the ordinance is 30 days after adoption.
Thank you. The motion's in order. Any questions or comments? Ms. Jones?
Thanks. I have a question. We had some questions regarding the historic preservation buildings and how this language treats those buildings. And I think we covered it, but I just wanted to make sure we're clear on the record. My understanding is that the language that's being adopted is basically taking the DNRC language, which is based on the federal language as to what is a historic building, and that in terms of a new floodplain map, any historic building is grandfathered in and remains as is, even if there's water flowing around it. So is that, is that correct, Cassie? I just want to make sure that we're clear on the historic building issue.
Yes, that's correct. The two instances where historic structures are considered in the floodplain regulations is for extra consideration of variances to the regulations, and they are exempt from the substantial improvement portion of the regulations, which would generally force a structure to come into compliance if they spend a lot of money updating it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, Ms. Raybain, we can have a roll call vote.
Okay. On, I think this one's an ordinance on floodplain. Let's start this round with Farmer.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vaseka?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bessera?
Yes.
And Carlino?
Yes.
But any of you like to change your vote? That is eleven eyes, one absent, and it passes.
And the motion's approved. Thank you, Mr. Pard, for all of your work on this as well. Appreciate that. And we can move on to our final public hearing, which is an interim ordinance on city zoning updates to comply with recent legislation. And we have, we have Madsen Mathias with our staff report.
Yes, thank you. All right. Let me know if there are any issues. My name is Madsen Mathias, and I am an associate planner on the long-range planning team. I am in front of you today because Community Planning Development and Innovation is proposing an interim urgency zoning ordinance amending Title 20 Zoning Code. The amendment in the ordinance aim to bring Title 20 Zoning Code language in compliance with the seven bills recently passed by the Montana State Legislature that specifically affect city zoning and were effective by October 1st, 2023. This past May, the Montana State Legislature ended their 2023 session in which they passed several land use-related bills. Of those recently passed bills, seven are incorporated in this proposed ordinance. Four of the seven bills were effective immediately upon signing in late spring and early summer 2023. Two more bills had July 1 effective dates, and the last bill had an effective date of October 1st. These effective dates set in immediate and near-term timeframes, target regulatory change at a particularly rapid pace. The state's attention to substantial rewrites to their land use code is in large part due to the ongoing affordable housing crisis that is compounded by increasing materials costs and lengthy development schedules. In response to and support of this effort, we propose today language amendments to our zoning code that align with the new language from the state. We propose to adopt these amendments under an equally fast timeline under an interim urgency zoning ordinance. The Montana Code annotated Section 762306 allows the city to amend land use allowances without following the procedures otherwise required prior to the adoption of a zoning ordinance. This allows for ordinance adoption without a 30-day period between adoption and effective date and reduces the requirements for public participation and engagement. This interim urgency zoning ordinance allows for rapid alignment of our codes to protect public health, safety, and welfare. It accomplishes many changes, including full compliance with state statutes consisting in part of the prohibition of certain design standards and processes, as well as the reduction of parking requirements for certain uses. Interim ordinances may only be in effect for a six-month period, followed by the option to extend another two years after that. By the end of the interim period, the city will have adopted a reformed code through the Armazula Project. Coming back to our timeline, through the summer and early fall, staff reviewed all seven bills to compare and align existing city regulations with the new bills. We've coordinated with city agencies and checked in with other Montana communities, as well as gleaning additional background on these bills from the Montana League of Cities and Towns. Once staff had a proposed ordinance, the proposed draft, a summary of changes, and the staff report were posted on Engage Missoula on September 29. An agency notification was sent on October 3, and a legal ad was posted in the Missoulian on October 7 in preparation for tonight's public hearing and final consideration. The Land Use and Planning Committee heard this as an informational item on October 4. I will now go through the proposed amendments to zoning code in order of the bill that initiates them. So in House Bill 305, the 2023 Montana Legislature removed the prohibition on microbreweries from being able to obtain a permit to sell beer and wine from the Department of Revenue. At the time this bill was passed, Title 20 did not consider the possibility of a microbrewery obtaining or operating alongside a retail beer and wine license. In response to the bill, the city proposes to allow microbreweries to co-locate with beer and wine retail sales so long as the microbrewery continues to be the primary use and the business closes at times that mirror the general closing times of restaurants. So, second, in House Bill 918, the legislature increased the occupancy limit for home daycares from 12 children to 15 children. At the time this bill was passed, Title 20 limited residential daycares to a maximum of 12 children or adults, which set the minimum occupancy of 13 children or adults for larger daycare centers. And in response to the bill, the city proposes to mirror the new limits and set a new maximum occupancy for 15 children or adults for residential daycares and jointly increasing the occupancy minimum for daycare centers to 16 children or adults. Third, in Senate Bill 178, the legislature added new definitions for data center and digital asset mining. This bill also prohibits local governments from treating digital asset mining businesses any differently than data centers, from preventing these businesses from operating in industrial areas, and from preventing home digital asset mining as a home-based business. At the time this bill was passed, Title 20 did not include any reference to or definitions for either data center or digital asset mining. In response to the bill, the city proposes to add new definitions for data center and digital asset mining that mirror those definitions created by the state. These uses will be permitted in M2 heavy industrial and conditional and M1 limited industrial districts. And additionally, a new definition for home digital asset mining will be added, and this use will be allowed as a home occupation. Fourth, in Senate Bill 195, the legislature amended the statutory requirements for the state building code to include a new allowance for the places of religious worship to accommodate temporary overnight visitors for a variety of purposes listed on the screen before you. At the time this bill was passed, Title 20's definition for religious assemblies did not explicitly include the allowance of temporary shelter other than through providing extreme weather shelter. In response to the bill, the city proposes to amend the definition of religious assembly to reflect this new temporary allowance as an addendum to the existing definition in Title 20. Additionally, the zoning code section regulating temporary uses has been revised to both include this new use and to limit the timeframe to 75 days in any zone in accordance with the bill. Fifth, in Senate Bill 245, the legislature required cities above certain population thresholds to allow as a permitted use multi-dwelling buildings and mixed-use developments in commercial zones. This bill further sets a maximum parking requirement for these uses at one space per unit. At the time this bill was passed, Title 20 expressly permitted multi-dwelling buildings and mixed-use buildings in all business and commercial districts, which complies with this requirement from the bill. Title 20 furthermore contains several categories for multi-dwelling parking requirements divided by size, senior living, and affordability that range from .5 to 2.0 vehicle spaces required per unit. In response to the bill, the city proposes to add a new separate multi-dwelling category to the vehicle parking schedule that requires a minimum of one parking space per unit for multi-dwelling units in BNC districts excluding the central business district, which does not have a minimum motor vehicle parking requirement. In the presentation to the Land Use and Planning Committee, staff had proposed a staff recommended change to the parking requirements, and that edit has since been rescinded. That was a confusion of the state essentially setting a maximum for cities. And our cities in our local regulations are setting a minimum for developers. So we are told what is the maximum that we can require of people. And then when we are requiring it of our developers, it becomes a minimum requirement. They can go above and beyond, but they need to at least meet one vehicle parking space. So that has not changed per the original ordinance that was circulated. Sixth, in Senate Bill 331, the legislature amended requirements for subdivision exemptions for certain condominiums and townhouses. These amendments include: one, limiting zoning regulations applicable to the review and approval processes to land use, density, bulk and dimensional requirements, landscaping, and parking requirements; two, limiting the review period to 20 working days; and three, prohibiting governing requirements for Teds. And the city also proposes repealing all references to conditions of approval and parkland dedication or cash-in-lieu. And finally, seventh, in Senate Bill 407, the legislature amended the statute for municipal zoning districts to limit the local design review standards to what is clear, objective, and necessary to protect public health or safety or to comply with federal law. And furthermore, requires administrative determinations of applications for design review except those applying for historic preservation review. At the time this bill was passed, all building standards within Title 20 were tied to public health, safety, and welfare. Certain standards were solely architectural and aesthetically focused, and certain other standards needed clearer and more objective wording. Title 20 furthermore contained provisions giving the Design Review Board decision-making authority for design review, including alternative compliance and variations to design regulations. In response to the bill, the city is repealing the Design Review Board, all references to the board, and comprehensively transferring the board's authority to the zoning officer, and in a specific case, retaining the Historic Preservation Commission. In further response to the bill, the city proposes to remove building standards that do not clearly protect public health and safety, to amend certain other standards and intent statements to tie more explicitly to public health and safety, and to keep those standards that are clear and measurable, that help guide bulk and form, that promote crime prevention through environmental design, that maintain clear visibility and identification of buildings and entrances for emergency services, that protect and provide comfort for the pedestrians and other sidewalk users, that protect and buffer residential uses, and that promote climate resilience and reduce urban heat island effect. Furthermore, certain residential and commercial development types of applicable regulations related to alternative design options. These options, including those standards related to color, materials, and other architectural features, are being kept in zoning code. Staff have amended the minimum required options to be chosen to those that relate explicitly to public health and safety. So the minimum requirement complies with SB Senate Bills 407. Should applicants desire to choose a welfare-based standard, that that still exists as an approvable design option. More details on the specific language to either be amended or repealed can be found in the ordinance and staff report attached to the agenda. Please see this table on the slide before you. This is a reference, a guide summarizing which Title 20 chapters are being affected by this ordinance and which bills affect each chapter. Title 20, Section 2085040G outlines review criteria for the city council to consider when reviewing and making decisions on zoning amendments. The zoning regulations proposed do align with the city's growth policy. They promote public health, safety, and welfare. They will not affect public service provision, transportation systems, and they do support the provision of light and air. Amendments consider compatible urban growth and character, encourage appropriate land use, and serve the best interests of the city, addressing the changing conditions created by the rapid state statute changes and prioritizing community well-being. These criteria are also expanded upon further in the staff report. As of today, staff have received five public comments. One of these is in express support of the ordinance as proposed. While others support amendments to the interim ordinance. These supported amendments arise from concerns over the compliance with components of Senate Bill 407. Concerns were raised over the compliance of the remaining building standards with the requirement for protecting public health and safety. At this time, staff did not recommend any changes to the building standards as proposed in the draft ordinance, given that what remains are standards that are either explicitly tied to public health and safety, including the protection of community and environmental health, or standards that are unrelated to the design entirely. Additional concerns were raised over the proposed process to send appeals of administrative design review decisions to the Board of Adjustment. In the Montana Code annotated Section 762323, the Board of Adjustment is given the authority to be the reviewing body for appeals of administrative decisions. So as a result of the changes to design review becoming an administrative process, staff also do not recommend any changes to these parts of the ordinance as proposed. And then finally, questions have been raised over the application of historic preservation review in the historic Fort Missoula neighborhood character overlay. Neighborhood character overlays that provide for Historic Preservation Commission review of permit applications are districts that the local government has designated as historic and that provide for protection of their historic character. Currently, we have one historic, or we have one neighborhood character overlay that provides for Historic Preservation Commission review. And that one is the Historic Fort Missoula Neighborhood Character Overlay, which by name and applicability meets those criteria. The language in Senate Bill 407 states that a city may continue to allow Historic Preservation Boards to review applications for a permit or variance to structures or districts that the local government has designated historic or that are listed on the National Register of Historic Places. In light of this information and interpretation, staff do not recommend changes to the proposed ordinance in response to these questions. At this time, staff recommend the following motion to be adopted by the city council. Pursuant to state law, Sections 762307 and C.A., the city council hereby adopts an interim urgency zoning measure amending Title 20, Missoula City Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 2001. 2001 introductory provisions, Chapter 2005 residential districts, Chapter 2010 business and commercial districts, Chapter 2015 industrial and manufacturing districts, Chapter 2020 open space, public and aviation districts, Chapter 2025 overlay districts, Chapter 2040 use and building-specific standards, Chapter 2045 accessory uses and structures, Chapter 2060 parking and access, Chapter 2065 landscaping, Chapter 2075 signs, Chapter 2085 review and approval procedures, Chapter 2090 administration, Chapter 2100 terminology, and Chapter 2105 use classifications, to incorporate regulations concerning legislative changes to state land use regulations. As these are zoning amendments that are mandated by the state of Montana with effective dates that occur before or on October 1st, 2023, timing necessitates addressing these amendments through an interim urgency ordinance. I appreciate your time and attention. I am here along with several members of my team in CPDI to hear your comments and answer your questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for the staff report. With that, I will open the public hearing, and this is an opportunity to comment on the items in the urgency ordinance. You're welcome to come on up.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I just want to thank council for considering these amendments. Not all cities are following through on complying with some of these pieces of legislation which were key parts of the Housing Task Force report, namely SB 245, SB 407, which was brought by our own, Missoula's own Shane Moore Joe, and I think also SB 331. Those were key parts of the Housing Task Force report that we sort of zeroed on, zeroed in on as proven reforms that other jurisdictions across the country have adopted to address housing shortages, and that's why we prioritize them, as Madison pointed out in her presentation, that these were brought forth to address Montana's housing crisis, which is statewide at this point. It's felt most acutely in cities like Missoula and Bozeman and the Flathead, but it's really being felt statewide, and we're hearing that from all across the state. Just a couple things. The, there's two public comments, one that is supportive of the changes, and the second one after that, I think, I think it came from Mr. Gray, who's an architect in town, put forth some additional reforms that the city council can make in order to really comply with the spirit of SB 407, which was about making sure that design standards are clear and objective, and that just generally the design review process is predictable and carried out by experts who, you know, Missoula employs in the planning office. I just want to say that, like, we support those additional changes requested by Mr. Gray, who has a lot of experience getting housing built in town and who really understands the little ordinances that can increase the cost of development and, you know, do builders in town pass those costs on to, you know, residents who buy those places? Of course they do. And so what that means is that when we make these reforms to make sure that multifamily housing can be built faster and more affordably without compromising public health or safety, it's really important to go down that route and to make, and seriously consider those Other than that, like, thank you for considering these, and I just want to reiterate, not a lot of cities in Missoula and Montana are taking the action that you're taking to comply with these laws and really adopt better practices for building more affordably. And so thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Tenenbaum. Anyone else? All right.
Mr. Gray, are you able to unmute yourself?
Mary has, I've unmuted on my end, but I don't know what's going on in his. I'm going to try advancing him to make him a presenter at the meeting, and let's see if that helps. Mr. Gray, that'll take just a second.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
I appreciate your time in taking on this quite challenging project. I just wanted to let you know, since I do quite a bit of multifamily, and when I say multifamily, so I do multifamily alone in my practice, I do vertical mixed-use buildings, mixed-use buildings, and commercial buildings, and commercial buildings. And so I'm very familiar with things that drive up the cost of housing in Missoula. And there's a, there's a few things I wrote up in that letter that I really hope that you would consider to try to make housing more affordable in Missoula. I did a 15-plex in the Design Excellence Overlay that's being constructed right now, in the Design Excellence Overlay Design Rules, added $50,000 to that 15-unit apartment building, so that's over $3,000 per apartment, and that really adds a lot of money to make the project profitable. And so I'd really love to see if the council will do everything it can to make housing more equitable and more affordable by simplifying a lot of the rules that are in currently in our zoning code. The big ones are ceiling heights, glazing areas. Glazing areas increase the amount of heating cost and cooling cost that tenants pay, increases the carbon footprint of a building, and so on top of the cost of the building, they're paying extra because they have really tall ceilings. I mean, a 10-foot ceiling in it as a code minimum in the city, that's very harmful for a renter or a person that's maybe buying a condo as their first home. It adds a substantial cost. The electrician on this one job told me that was the first 10-foot ceiling he had ever done in a residence, and so anything you could do to help to make Missoula more affordable for residential development, I think would be very, very important, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Appreciate your, anyone else tonight with public comment? All right, seeing none in the room or online, I'll close the public hearing, and again, these came out of Land Use and Planning.
I move council adopt an interim urgency zoning measure pursuant to state law, Section 76-2-307 MCA, amending Title 20, Missoula City Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 20.01 introductory provisions, Chapter 20.05 residential districts, Chapter 20.10 business and commercial districts, Chapter 20.15 industrial and manufacturing districts, Chapter 20.20 open space, public and aviation districts, Chapter 20.25 overlay districts, Chapter 20.40 use and building specific standards, Chapter 20.45 accessory uses and structures, Chapter 20.60 parking and access, Chapter 20.65 landscaping, Chapter 20.75 signs, Chapter 20.85 review and approval procedures, Chapter 20.90 administration, Chapter 20.100 terminology, Chapter 20.105 use classifications to incorporate regulations concerning legislative changes to the-
We have heavy winters here, we have a lot of precipitation, and the ice that builds up, and the idea to protect people that are trying to enter and exit from their homes and give them a landing pad. Also, the idea that we want to have clearly delineated entrances, particularly for access of our emergency services, was something that we held on to when looking through these standards. So there were some lenses that we came back to, and I'd be happy to also, I might let you follow up a little, give you kind of some, some options. There's some lenses that we used as well, that, some planning best practice that is used that we maintained in relation to protecting public health and safety. And then, let's see, some other standards. As I said, Mr. Gray proposes to repeal entirely the alternative design options that are welfare-based, and we as staff decided in support keeping the welfare-based options. The bill says that the requirements for design regulations need to be tied to public health and safety, and so if we just require a bare minimum that is tied to public health and safety and allow other options that are welfare-based, it's still an approvable permit, but the bare minimum that's required is still compliant with the protection of public health and safety and just complying with the bill. I want to add one more thing about the vertical mixed-use building. This, again, is an elective building type, it's, it's not a mandatory requirement, if that is a chosen development option. Staff support keeping all of the standards related to that definition within vertical mixed-use building, again, based on the understanding that it is not a requirement at any point in the code, it is elective. There are some other nuances in there. I know that towards the end, there are some larger questions. Please let me know if you'd like me to address any of those, but I'd like to kick it back to you for now.
Mr. Nugent, I see, I see Mr. Parter's also popped up on screen, and Ms. Means has her hand up. Go ahead.
Hello, everybody. This is Lavelle Means with the Planning Section, Long Beach Planning and Community, Community Planning. I wanted to also kind of circle us back to some of the standards that are in our zoning that really come from a foundation of, of the bulk and parcel and building standards that is found in all of our zoning districts. So what we do with some of our use-specific standards and our, and our other customizing through overlays, modifications, is provide adjustments to those bulk and space standards. So when there are standards that, kind of pertaining to some of the things that were brought up through the comment letter from Mr. Gray, do away with "built-to" lines or "building width," or, you know, it's about setbacks and relationships between the building and the street. That isn't really a design standard, that is a massing and bulk standard. So we looked through the, all the different regulations that are in the code. Not all the regulations fit the description of what is a design standard. So when it came to the regulations that shape the perimeter of the building, that massing and bulk and its location on the site, that's a place where we retained the requirements that dealt with that massing. And then when it came to design that was articulation to it, we applied the lenses of the public health and safety, sort of like the ability to, you know, what's the value of the glazing? That had a public health and safety relationship. What's the value of the height of the first floor, the second floor? That had a relationship to public health and safety. So those were some of the other pieces that I wanted to share with you in terms of a distinction between the, a design standard and things that are really tied to our basic foundation of the zoning relationship and what shapes the form on any given parcel.
Thank you. Mr. Nugent? Lavelle, real quick before I ask my question, would you define massing? Because I think that that might be something the council needs better definition on.
I think of it as the, the form of the building, the very basic perimeter, the thing that makes up the form. So that covers the, the height of it, the requirement for certain stepbacks, and, yeah, so it's, it's the form in the building itself.
Mr. Nugent? I guess the last question I'll ask, just to give other people time, would you expand on how glazing is a public health and safety?
I can pass that to, like, Cassie and Mattson did the deep dive on the, the elements that go into the design, so.
Absolutely. Pardon me one second, I'd like to pull this up. So glazing specifically is one of the ways that the public and the private realm continue to have an interaction with one another. It's, it's one of a core tenants or core practices with crime prevention through environmental design. The idea is to have eyes on the street and to create that constant engagement between, between those two places. And there's a substantial amount of research I would be happy to provide at a, at a later period on the SEPTED Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design Rules. And the requirement for glazing is only on these primary and secondary streets, it's only on these street-facing facades, and so it is focused, and it is, you know, the lion's share is going to be on the primary street and on the ground floor, where there is the primary pedestrian activity, where you see the most people. And again, this is only going to be applicable in commercial buildings, in the downtown area, and in some of our key corridors in town. Please let me know if you have anything else on that.
Thanks. Mr. Nugent, anything else? Okay, great. I want to, I want to go back a little bit to massing and scale and setback. I mean, those to me feel like fundamentally not design issues, and that, that feels like a very fundamental distinction to me, that, that the size of a building as it relates to the parcel and where it is on the parcel is more of a, of a fundamental. The design is more on the surface treatments and all the other things that we've, that we've regulated historically as design, but is it fair to say massing and scale and setbacks, those are, those are fundamental to every one of our base zones? And if those, if there's, if we remove discretion around that, we, we fundamentally change the, the scale and scope of development within our community. I don't know, is that, is that, is that a fair worry?
Yes. Thank you for, for raising that point. I would say that it is a fundamental concept that is used not only in the base zones, but for most of our use types, most of our development types, and in our overlay districts, to provide for the feeling of connectivity, to provide for the provision of light and air, and again, to create that, that human-scale environment, and to create the, the scale of a community that, that the rest of Missoula expects with, with, you know, mirroring the, the practices that we have seen in, throughout our development, throughout our community.
Thanks. Ms. Masico?
Yeah, I just had a question that Representative Tenenbaum came, came up and mentioned, that a lot of cities aren't complying with this. I guess what happens if a city does not comply with this? I don't know who I'm asking that question to. If anybody has a suggestion or answer, I'd be happy to hear.
Mr. Sudbury?
Yeah, I mean, so it kind of depends on what the standard is, but if a city were to deny a permit based on not complying with their local standards that had been clearly overridden by the state standards, that they could easily be subject to lawsuit, you know, by the state standards, that they could easily be subject to lawsuit, you know, mandamus that the permit should be issued and that the local government had been doing things out of compliance with state law when the state law had been preempted. So that's pretty clear. And that's one of the reasons we're trying to put this forward. So we're, we're in a bit of a pickle because our, our current code requires certain things or steps or process or design elements that are not, no longer allowed by state law. So if we don't pass this code, we're going to be in a situation where we are receiving permit applications for things and trying to review them against sort of two sets of regulations, the existing Title 20 and what we think the state law changes from this legislative session have mandated. And so we, we could, you know, and I would advise staff to comply with the state law provisions. But we could be in a situation where we issue a permit that is in compliance with what our interpretation of the state law changes, but that is not in compliance with the existing city code. And let's say a neighbor or somebody else wanted to challenge that permit authorization, we would be in a situation where somebody could sue the city for issuing a permit in, in, that's in clear violation of our own code. So this is, you know, I think a critical step in the process of making sure that we're safe. Some of the other communities, from what I understand, are going to be sort of reviewing these on an ad hoc basis. And if a developer points out that, you know, something that they're requiring is no longer required by, state law are no longer allowed by state law, that they'll sort of vary it from a case by case basis. But I, I think staff have done a really good job. We've, we've had a lot of back and forth on a number of these provisions. You know, I, I, I went in kind of skeptical on some of the things that they, they were defining and, and thinking that more things needed to be deleted. But, but Mattson and her, and the rest of the CPDI staff, to their credit, really did a lot of work in justifying and drawing lines based on a hazy set of words that the legislature gave us. And, and really, at the end of the day, I thought they, they did a really nice job in defending each one of these provisions. You know, what was a design standard? What was, you know, something related more specifically to land use? And, and just like the mayor was saying, I, I think the elements that he's talking about are, are land use and zoning elements. They're not local design standards. And, and so we went through a lot of that stuff to make sure we weren't in a situation like these other cities may be in where they could be sued for issuing permits that weren't in compliance with either the state law or in, or that were out of compliance with their own code because they were attempting to follow the state laws. So.
Thank you. That was a really thorough and great answer for that. And I agree, staff definitely did a very thorough and amazing job. So, great job, everybody.
Thanks, Ms. Jones.
Yeah, thanks. I wanted to just ask some questions about the process of the design of, sorry, the zoning officer addressing decisions regarding the design review implementation, and then the appeal to the Board of Adjustment. And instead of going to city council, but our administrative issues typically go to Board of Adjustment. So first of all, just a quick question, how many appeals have there been regarding design excellence in the last, I mean, it was put in, I want to say five years ago, we implemented it, give or take?
I am familiar with one filing for an appeal, one, one application that never set calendar and, and scheduled and ended up coming through with a compliant permit. I believe it has been fully permitted at this time. So.
Yeah, Cassie Truppar, Planning Supervisor. Mattson, I believe that one was related to landscaping alternative compliance through Design Review Board, but we have not received any appeals or design excellence related standards at this point in time.
Okay, can, follow up?
Follow up?
And so there were some questions regarding the decisions made by the zoning officer and their background to not only apply design review, but their expertise. My understanding is most folks that we've got in Office of Development doing this have some expertise. Can you speak to who, how that works? Who is the zoning officer and some level of background to be applying this?
Yes, absolutely. So in the case of design excellence, in the, if design excellence, there is a variation that is desired or requested. In the past, an applicant could request to go to the Design Review Board for approval of a significant amount of variations or a significant alteration or, or an appeal. In these cases going forward, when a, an application is elevated outside of design excellence, it is given the ability to apply the review criteria within the design review standards that are being maintained in Title 20. And those are broader in scope and allow for a flexibility with the applicant, a process of, of give and take with the, with the standards and with those higher levels of variations. And then, at that point, if the application is not sufficient and it is denied, then the administrative decision would go to the Board of Adjustment under those same review criteria and design review. I see both Cassie and Lavelle, their hands up. Go ahead.
And feel free to chime in. I'm Cassie or Lavelle.
Lavelle, do you want to, or?
I was gonna hand it to Kathy because she is supervising staff in the current planning, reviewing projects on a regular basis. So if you don't say what I was gonna say, I might raise my hand again.
So the zoning officer is Walter Banziger, our Deputy Director, who was an architect for both the Montana State University and privately prior to this job. Additionally, we have other staff with architectural backgrounds as well.
Follow up?
Follow up?
Got a couple more, just to, just to flesh out this topic. So the Board of Adjustment, as I look through it, we have architects, attorneys, realtors, real estate experts. There, there are some levels of expertise, because when I compare that to council, council is much, much broader. So I, I see a lot of rationale in having the Board of Adjustment hear this. And can you just, how, how have we approached staff, filling those spots in the Board of Adjustment? Are there some criteria for who we are trying to put on there? Because we do seem to have certain areas that we've targeted that provide expertise.
Well, I can, I can speak to that because those are mayoral appointments. So the Board of Adjustment, you know, I, I tend to look for subject matter expertise in, in land use and, and adjacent fields. And that board is populated with, you know, like, like any of our boards, they're populated with professionals who have expertise that's relevant. And it's, it's, I know there's a, there's a vacancy coming up. It's, I can't speak to any of the specific members right now on that board, but, but that's my general approach to appointing any board.
Thanks. That helps. It, it, when I look up the members and their backgrounds, we clearly have levels of expertise there. And it is focused on, on populating that board with people who will bring something to the table that will cover these topics. I guess my last question is just in terms of, say, someone has a design review issue, they're unhappy with what the zoning officer has decided, and they appeal it to the Board of Adjustment, what is the timeframe in terms of when they can actually have it heard in front of the Board of Adjustment?
That is a great question. I believe that is written into Title 20 zoning code, if you wouldn't mind giving me one second.
Maybe somebody else has a question. We can come back. It's hard to look under pressure.
We'll come back to that. Any additional comments or questions? Okay, we'll just hold off for a moment then.
I will just note that Board of Adjustment or Administrative Appeals going to Board of Adjustment is noted in state law as well. So I'm not seeing anything immediately related to the appeals of administrative decisions that has a timeline. I know, or this is written into 2085-100 in Title 20, that the appeals must be filed, or the application for an appeal must be filed within 30 days of the decision that's being appealed. And then appeals for a rehearing have another 30 day deadline. But without an explicit timeline, I believe that it would be up to the Board of Adjustment to schedule that. There are other types of appeals written into Title 20 and other appeal procedures that do have timelines on when the, when the hearing should be held.
Thank you.
Not immediately.
Okay. And, and Board of Adjustment, I, I know for a fact that there's an architect and a planner. I can't recall the others, but, but I mean, it is professionals in this, in this area. Okay. Any additional questions or comments? And we can take comments on the ordinance package broadly as well. Mr. Nugent?
Yeah, I, I don't think that the, the questions about the appeal going to the Board of Adjustments are about qualifications. I think it's that the bill specifically aimed to eliminate these decisions being made by a non-elected board. So it got shifted to staff. And then if they don't agree with staff decision, we're sending it back to a non-elected board. And I think that's where some of the concern comes from. And I could go back and forth on this. This isn't something that I want to get wrapped up on. But I could see that being something that the legislature tackles next session, simply because, you know, we could talk about intent, and I, I would be surprised if their intent was for it, the final decision to terminate with a non-elected board. Because if you don't agree with the Board of Adjustment, you do not get to appeal to city council. It becomes a civil thing. So, I mean, my thought would be that it should be an appeal to LUP or council, but I, that's the least of the questions I have. I would actually like to see staff go through Mr. Gray's comments a little bit more. But I, I want to give them time to prepare that. I wouldn't want to do that right now. So my preference would be to say, send this back to land use and planning and talk about it a little bit more before we finalize it. But I, or we make that decision, I'd be open to other group of.
But so under your rules, that is your prerogative following a public hearing. So you can do that unilaterally. We can keep talking about it tonight, but if you want to do that, that is perfectly acceptable. And we can keep talking about it tonight and then send it back.
I, I would just, before I make that, I would just like to give anybody the opportunity to comment before we just, yeah.
Ms. Sherrill?
No, I actually, I was waiting till the end to say, say the same thing. I'd like to, I'd like to, I would support sending it back and go, have, giving staff some time to go through this and all of us some time to digest it. It seems fast to be making the decision on some of these.
Additional discussion tonight? Ms. Jones?
What would your timeframe be on sending it back?
So we have two options. We, we have LUP scheduled for this Wednesday, and we could push our discussion on Mr. Carlini's referral around Airbnb's back a week, do it this Wednesday, or we could give staff a little bit more time and do it next, the following Wednesday, which would be Wednesday, the, doing math on the spot here, 25th? Yeah, all right. And I know it's an urgency thing, and I think that getting it right is okay. So I'm okay with the two weeks. Not seeing anybody else on council objecting to that. So I would say LUP, not this Wednesday, but the following Wednesday.
And so, Mr. Sudbury, if I could ask, so the primary risk here is likely not that staff would not follow state law, but that if a permit were to be issued and someone felt aggrieved, they could, they could essentially say that we weren't following our ordinance. And that, that's, that's where the, that's where my layperson interpretation of the legal risk lands. Is that fair?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I, at the same time, I think staff is going to have a difficult time trying to navigate, you know, what standards they're supposed to apply with, you know, we could rely on this interim ordinance, but it hasn't been adopted yet. So we're going to have to, on a case by case basis, interpret what we think state law allows or not allow and override our code. I mean, it's not a situation I would want to be in if I was a planner. Second, yeah, but several of these items that Mr. Gray has identified are elements that we could take up at a later date. Now, this ordinance, I, I'm not hearing issues with the written text of this ordinance. What I'm hearing are there should be other things that should be stripped out of Title 20 to comply with somebody's particular interpretation of what the state law requires. We can still do that. There are other code changes in the works. You can, council can direct staff to bring specific changes or address his, Mr. Gray's comments in a specific, separate action and bring it back to city council for consideration. I, I'm just, you know, I would suggest passing it unless you have a problem with what's written. And then to direct staff or refer another thing to land use and planning to address, or have we gotten far enough? Did we turn the dials correctly in the code to define design standards and things like that? And if not, you know, direct specific changes that you'd like to see, or other elements you'd like to see stripped out rather than delaying this ordinance, if, if that's something in this ordinance is particularly concerning that people have particular heartburn over.
Thanks. Ms. Anderson?
Thanks so much, Mr. Mayor. I guess my question is, I mean, I feel like we have multiple processes running at the same time. We have this urgency ordinance that we are trying to make sure that we are in compliance with state law. And many of those laws that were passed during the legislative session had, you know, various dates, July and October for when they took effect. I know that we're also going through a fairly comprehensive code review process that touches all our aspects of this. And so it does seem like staff has already, from the, you know, answers that they give into the questions tonight, really taken into consideration some of the concerns that have been brought up. It sounds like there's been various meetings. Staff has kind of answered some of those questions. So I guess I'm wondering, you know, a little bit, I guess, more to your comment, Mr. Sudbury, about with the urgency ordinance, what's the timeline, you know, because I also realize that there is every day more and more coming into the pipeline. And so making sure that we have things on the books in a timely fashion are important. So what's, I mean, if we pass this tonight, it will go into effect when, till when? Yes, I'm sure, like, I mean, I can go back and look at that in the reading. But then, you know, obviously delaying it will, you know, anything that comes in between now and then kind of fall into this gray period?
Yeah, so it's an urgency ordinance. It's in effect for six months. It would need to be renewed at the end of that six month period or amended or, or, you know, fail to be renewed. I don't, I have to pull it up to figure out when it goes into effect, if it's an immediate effective date or if it's 30 days. I imagine it's 30 days since it's not, sort of, nope, Lavelle's shaking her head. So immediate effective date would expire in six months. But as I mentioned, there, there are other, you're correct that the Code Reform Project is moving forward. I staff hopes to have a complete project on that by the end of next year. But as I mentioned, they're also working on another set of ordinance amendments that are due in, after the, the turn of the year. So there, there is another chance to get bites of the apple here if there are additional things that like to be, that council would like to see added or, or maybe more accurately stripped out of Title 20.
I have a follow up.
Ms. Anderson?
Thanks. Mattson, I guess, since you seem to be taking the lead on this, I mean, some of, I'm assuming that you saw the comments from Mr. Gray and have had a chance to sort of compare them to, you know, what your recommendations are. Is that a true statement based on some of the comments you made earlier?
Yes.
Okay. So I mean, I guess I'm comfortable, well, no, no, I have questions. I will save my comment. Thank you so much.
You're welcome to make a comment. We, we can do both.
I mean, I guess that it is the prerogative of the land use and planning chair, and that's fine. I just, I guess maybe I would, it does sound like, and I guess we can, I should have asked the actual question of Mattson about whether or not they feel comfortable presenting this Wednesday, because it does seem as though there's, you know, time, you know, I think we've learned that developers hate ambiguity. And so the more clarity and the sooner we can get this along, the better. So if we want to have it in committee, which I'm super open to, I'd love to have it this week. And if the schedule rearrangements of, you know, possibly moving something out of LUP that's on the docket this week to next week, would be, you know, I guess if I were to offer a preference, that would be it.
Mattson?
But don't want to put Mattson on the spot.
I am happy to be on the spot at this moment. My expectations are managed. Thank you. I absolutely could speak both tonight and more thoroughly. I absolutely could speak both tonight and more thoroughly this Wednesday at the Land Use and Planning Committee on Mr. Gray's letter. I would also be happy to go through some of this tonight if that was a prerogative or a desire. I have had the time to look at a lot of it. And one of the things that I would like to vocalize, I guess, on behalf of both staff and for council's consideration, is the amount of time that has gone into the deliberation on the application of public health and safety and the, and the amount of time and alternative opinions that have gone into this. Not only do we have Levau Means, who is both a trained architect and has expertise in planning, we have Mary McCray, who is an architect, Walter Banziger is also an architect, Ryan Sudbury has been involved in this from the outset, communicating with other Montana cities who are doing less than we are, and the Montana League of Cities and Towns, who has been able to provide us with a lot of insight into why and our interpretation or insight into our, into our approach today and into the proposed ordinance that we are giving. The letter also from Mr. Gray, there, there's not, and I'm happy to pull a lot more of our practice and our rationale and the, a lot of the language that I have in the staff report too behind how we're tying building standards to public health and safety. There's something that I, I think is also, there's, there's a lack, there's a deficit in some ways for staff to build off of just the disagreement, right? And, and I think that staff has put so much time into the rationale behind what we have kept. And a lot of what, what I see in that letter is that something is just not compliant. And it's, it's, it's hard for me at this point to craft a comprehensive argument for council to consider with, with just saying that, that there's a different interpretation with how many other people we've consulted in this process. And the additional time, you know, if, if it's two weeks, I think that makes a lot of sense. The additional time that this takes, takes time away as well from, from our staff capacity and the long-range planning team to devote the time to the more comprehensive code reform effort as well, which is a, is a staffing consideration at this time. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, back to the main motion. Further discussion? Ms. Becerra?
I know, Berta, we have this.
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
We do.
Okay, thank you.
I, I think it's tempting to want to continue to revise and review this based on the comments that we received, but I feel confident that staff has had plenty of time to look at this and bring us into compliance. I think there's going to be more opportunities for us to see how this is working on the ground and look at how comments like the ones received from Mr. Gray can and should be informing any changes that we need to make to whatever we pass tonight, hopefully. So I, I would encourage us to just be done with it, dispense with this tonight and either bring the comments provided by Mr. Gray as a separate issue or, you know, review later on. That would be my preference.
Any additional comments, Mr. Nugent?
All right, just a couple of questions from Mr. Sudbury then. If, if this passes, if we vote on this tonight and it passes and we want to address some of these down the road, can we bring another urgency ordinance or does it have to go through the regular process?
I, I think you can do either one. You can bring an urgency ordinance because you're, you know, sad, we'd still satisfy the state law requirements for an urgency ordinance under Title 76. Or if we can work it into the package that's going in January, it's possible there's enough time to get that done and, you know, have it be just done in the regular course of a code change. But I, I think your, either option is available to you.
Follow-up, Ron? All right, additional discussion? Cheryl?
I'm comfortable with having options to look at it in the future, voting on it tonight. I think there's some good reasons to go ahead and move forward, but happy to keep it in committee if that's where you want to keep it.
I'm fine voting on it so long as if we feel the need to address it, we can quickly do so in the same expedited fashion we did this. I do think that it's, it's appropriate for us to take more time and consider if this new law that just passed is being interpreted correctly. And I think it's reasonable, you know, when we've got members of the delegation that voted on that at the state level coming and saying, hey, we're concerned that maybe it's not quite there, that I think that's a reasonable thing for us to discuss. So you will in the coming weeks see a referral around that from me, but I won't send it back to committee.
All right. Any additional discussion? Okay. Seeing none. Again, thank you to all the staff for wading through all of this and getting us to a point of achieving compliance. You know, I do think Senate Bill 407 was fairly narrow, and a lot of this is fairly narrow. I understand that there's some outcomes that members of the delegation are advocating for. And I think it's important to talk about the process on how we go about discussing those. I, in my discussions with staff, I think that we are taking care of everything we need to under the state mandate. And I think this is a good piece of business tonight for that. So I don't see any additional discussion, so we can have a roll call vote. Ms. Raybiden?
Okay, on the interim zoning ordinance, I'll just also note for the record that interim zoning ordinances are effective for six months unless they're renewed by the governing body. Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Becerra?
Yes.
Carlini?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
And would any of you like to change your vote? That is 11 ayes and one abstain, and it passes.
And the motion's approved. We don't have any additional public hearings tonight. We have one item under Committee Reports, and this is the Amendment to Council Rule Number 22. This was initiated by Mr. Carlini. So, Mr. Carlini, I'd go to you if there's any additional information before we, before we move on to council discussion.
No additional information. Could I present the topic real quick?
Of course.
Yeah, this is basically the only thing that we're proposing to change here is, under Rule 22, it says whenever any item of business duly submitted to a council committee has not been discussed by that committee within six weeks of its submission date, any two council members can activate that item for discussion. So basically, the change is just to change it from six weeks to four weeks, just to have a little bit more timely process for whenever two council members want to bring something up to the committee for a vote. So that's, that's the change. And I'll go ahead and make the motion to move to it.
So this actually has to, the motion has to come from the committee chair? So I'll go to Ms. Jones for the motion, then we can come back to you to speak to why it is, to give an authorship speech essentially, or a sponsorship speech. Okay. So Ms. Jones, if you wouldn't mind making an affirmative motion, just so that a yes vote is yes and a no vote is no?
Okay, I'll note that the, it came out of committee with a do not pass recommendation. The motion I will make is to adopt an amendment to City Council Rule 22 to change the petition time to four weeks to get an item on the committee agenda.
That motion is in order. Mr. Carlini, do you want to speak to that?
No, I, I guess, I guess I will really quick. I appreciate it being a six yes, two vote, two no vote in committee and, and having strong support. It's a really small change in a role that hopefully we won't even ever have to use. But I believe any council member should be able to bring something up for discussion and for a city council vote. However, I think having two council members be able to do that within four weeks is a reasonable compromise and a step forward to a more timely process and more democratic process of allowing any two council members to, to bring something forward and represent their constituents. So I hope that we can just make this small, small rule change here.
Thank you. We'll go to public comment and then council discussion. Is there any public comment on this proposed change to our council rules? Seeing none in the room and none online. Council discussion. Ms. Vasika?
I am in favor of this, but one of the concerns from some of our colleagues at the last meeting was what if we, like, what if it's like November or budget season and we have really busy committee meetings? So I do have an amendment to propose in the sentence, where does it say? At the next committee meeting or in one of the following meetings with the sponsor's approval? So, because right now it's currently saying that it will be seen at the next committee meeting, which could be like next week or this week. We have a very full day. But if, for example, I, Daniel and I went to go get something off of the, that we haven't been able to get discussed, but the next committee meeting, as per the rule, would be really busy, Gwen could say, well, how about the weekend after next? And we'd be like, oh, okay, yeah, that, that's fair enough. I don't know. I'm just thinking out loud here.
Could you state your proposed amendment?
Yes, or in one of the following meetings with the sponsor's approval. And I'm very open to changing the wording on that as well.
Okay. That motion is in order. Discussion on the motion, on the amendment. So I'm going to, my interpretation is that this amendment since would, would take a majority vote to amend the main motion, and then the subsequent motion would, would require two-thirds of the body. Not two, some are two-thirds of those present and voting, but amending the rules require two-thirds of the body. So my interpretation is that the amendment is a simple majority and then, and then the main motion is eight. So on, on the motion, on Ms. Vasika's motion to amend, any discussion? But, so you could accept it as such, or you could defer to Mr. Carlini on, on that as well? Mr. Carlini?
Yeah, so just to clarify, you're saying that, so they could schedule, they could activate it for the discussion at the next committee meeting? Or you're, or you're saying add in something or another committee meeting? Is that what you're?
So for currently, the language says item for discussion at the next committee meeting, period. And so I'm suggesting having a comma after next committee meeting or in one of the following meetings with the sponsor's approval, just so that it gives some freedom with the language to not have it at the exact next meeting if it's a highly contentious thing and it'll take three hours and then we'll have to go from like eight until seven o'clock.
And then just to clarify, the word sponsor would be like the two committee members that are petitioning or?
I, with the sponsor who is, with the person who is putting up the referral. So I'm okay to changing that word as well.
Yeah, what, that's, that intention of the amendment sounds good, and I'd be happy to take it as a friendly amendment. I'm just wondering if the word sponsor, like, is consistent with other city council rules or what, what the?
Ms. Raybiden?
Sponsor is usually the person who initiates the referral. So sometimes council members jointly sponsor a referral. It is different than the petitioners. So the petitioners are the two people who say, we petition to get this item heard. And then my understanding of this amendment is that you go to the list of sponsors where you listed on the agenda as, you know, the contact person, people for this referral, person or people for this referral, that it would, it would require their acquiescence to delay beyond the next week's meeting.
Sponsor appears in Rule 21J, in Rule 20J, in the same context, it appears?
Yeah, I believe so. And it's also an e-scribe speak when we, and on the referral memo, we list the sponsor on the referral memos.
I think I want to withdraw my proposed amendment. It's becoming a lot more difficult than I imagined, and I don't want to take away from what Daniel was originally proposing, so never mind.
Back to the main motion, discussion? Any, we had public comment. Okay, seeing no additional discussion, we can have a roll call vote. And again, this takes eight votes to pass.
Hey. On the amendment to City Council rules, Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
No.
Savage?
No.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
West?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Becerra?
Yes.
Carlini?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
And Jones?
No.
And would any of you like to change your vote? That is six ayes, five noes, and because it requires eight affirmative votes, that motion fails.
And the motion fails. We have no items of new business. I'll pass tonight on communications from the mayor, and we can start council comments with Mr. Nugent tonight.
I'll pass.
Ms. West?
So I just wanted to mention that that youth cannabis open house at CS Porter is Wednesday, October 24th, from 6:30 to 8:00, in case anyone missed it.
Mr. Carlini?
Pass.
Ms. Jordan?
Pass.
Ms. Cheryl?
Yeah, I just wanted to make people aware that Thursday night at, whereas it's, it's the UC Ballroom, the UC South Ballroom, DEQ is having a listening session around the Amendment of MIPA. If you remember the youth climate group, it was held versus Montana. This has been prompted by that. The comments are about how the state agency should analyze climate effects of proposed projects. So I'm just, I, I'm hoping that there's some of the elected officials that go and make comment and just hoping that, that we get a good showing. And we do not want them to roll back MIPA. We want them to strengthen it and strengthen public comment and public participation and have robust analyses of the effective projects on climate.
Ms. Vasika?
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to put a call out if there's any daycare workers or owners out there. I have been wanting to see what local obstacles within municipal code you have to expanding or hiring or expanding your business or hiring new people and not having as much employee turnover or if there's anything on the local level and local city, Missoula local level that was happening. Because from my understanding, there's a lot of legislative things, but I wanted to see what things I could do. So please reach out to me, 406-5293-851, or you could email me if you have some suggestions. And sooner rather than later, as I don't know if I will be here next year.
Ms. Jones?
Let's see, first of all, I just wanted to clarify that the open house for youth cannabis use is October 24th, Tuesday, not Wednesday, Tuesday. Okay, got that, all good. We're, we're clear. The second thing I wanted to say was, this weekend I attended a celebration of life for a neighbor. Thirty-three-year-old Colin Snodgrass passed away very suddenly about 10 days ago, and he was just a wonderful, wonderful guy. I just wanted to tell the family that what came through at his celebration of life was how much love there was in his family and extended family. It is a big Montana family spread across the state with many, many relatives. And I was glad that they all were able to come in and provide support to those parents because it is a really, really tough situation. So just wanted to say it was a beautiful celebration of life, and I'm glad I attended.
Ms. Becerra?
I'll pass, thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
I'll pass, thank you.
Ms. Farmer?
I'll pass.
And Ms. Savage?
I'll pass, thank you.
Thank you all. We have no additional items of business other than our standing administratively-approved agreement report. page 1101 of our agenda tonight. And thank you all for your service. We'll be adjourned.